All the study meeting to order, and if we would all please rise, and Councilmember Jim Jolly will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Jolly. Welcome to the March 11th, 2020, study session of the Livonia City Council. This meeting sets the agenda for the 1,893rd regular meeting, a voting meeting that will take place on Monday, March 23rd, 2020. We have all members of council here with us tonight. I do not have any announcements, but I believe that Councilmember McCullough has an announcement he wanted to make.
Thanks, Madam President. Yes, I want to give a huge shout out to Aaron, or Austin Lewandowski. He is a Clarenceville High School student who has started their rookie campaign for their robotics team, and also the Livonia Warriors robotics team. The team started with 12 students, and it kind of, after about four weeks of what I'm hearing, it got down to Austin and his mom. And he persevered, and I guess just recently, at the Macomb Community College Robotics Tournament, ended up placing first place. And yeah, huge shout out, I guess the whole audience was screaming, "Austin, Austin, Austin", it was like a Disney movie story. So huge congratulations to Austin out there. Keep up the good work, and your council supports you.
Wonderful. Thank you very much, Councilman McCullough. Anyone have anything else? I would just like to quickly mention that the DIA millage renewal was passed in all three counties yesterday, and regardless of how you feel about the millage, I would urge everyone in our city, in our county, to take advantage of the fact that because of the last millage, this will continue on with the new millage, but all residents of the three counties, Wayne, Macomb, and Oakland, all receive free general admission to the DIA. And if you haven't been down in a while, this is a great time to go visit. I think that's it. At this time, we'll move ahead with our agenda. I'd like to let everyone know that this is a study meeting. There will be no votes taken. The council members will, however, offer either one resolution or a combination of resolutions for each item. The resolutions offered may include an approving, denying, or referring resolution to a committee or a city department for its report and recommendation. A resolution of no further action may also be offered. There are some items that will simply be received and filed for the information of the council. Please note that all of the items on tonight's agenda will move on to the regular meeting of Monday, March 23rd, where they will be officially voted upon. If you would like to participate in any of the agenda items that are taken up this evening, please approach one of the podiums on either side of the road when the item is called, and you will be recognized. Generally, the petitioner, whether that's a city or a private entity, will make the initial presentation, followed by remarks from those in the audience who wish to comment on the item. So please come to the podium when the item is called. When you reach the podium and you're recognized, please state your name and your address, if you care to give it for the record, so that your remarks may be properly attributed to you. In the minutes for the meeting, it will also let the council and the audience know who is speaking to them. And at this time, we go to audience communication. If anyone in the audience would like to address council on any item not on this evening's study agenda, now is an opportunity to do so. Seeing none, we'll proceed with our new business, beginning with item number one. This is a request to revoke notice of special land use approval for waiver petition 1-9999-08-02-25, submitted by Summit Sports Incorporated, Doing Businesses Played Against Sports. This comes to us from Julian Sessi, Sessi &amp; Sessi, PC. As the tenant has vacated the premises and the new client does not intend to exercise the waiver used granted in Council Resolution 717-99. Mr. Chiramina?
I guess I can handle this, as I see the petitioner is not here. So this request stems from a waiver use approval that occurred in 1999. You referenced the petition number. It was in connection with a request by Played Against Sports to operate a secondhand business at the plaza located at Plymouth and Middle Belt Roads. And one of the conditions established by the council was that there be a letter of understanding signed by the landlord indicating that the waiver use would cease upon the petitioner or his assigned terminating their tenancy. And while it was not a requirement that a restriction be placed on the property, that was done in this particular case, so it does appear as a, the concern is that it appears as a cloud on a title, and for that reason, they would like that revoked. And I believe the letter from Sessi &amp; Sessi, PC succinctly makes that request for you to revoke that, that requirement and this deed. So this is something that was reviewed by Mike Fisher of the Law Department, and suggested that it be brought to council for formal action.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chiramina. Council?
Madam Chair, so moved with the recommendation that was put forward.
All right, on the consent agenda?
Yes, please.
All right, seeing no objections, we'll place it on the consent agenda. Item number two is a request to waive the city's noise ordinance into erect signs at reference locations. This comes to us from Mr. Fred Sakla, festival chairperson, the Basilica of St. Mary, Antiochian. Did I say that right?
Wonderful.
Orthodox church, I've been practicing a lot, Fred. In connection with their 12th Annual Michigan Fun Fest to be held from Thursday, June 18th, 2020, through Sunday, June 21st, 2020, at Bryant Park, 1-8000 Merriman Road. Good evening, Mr. Sakla.
Good evening. Hi, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here again. It's one of the fun things about being part of the festival for so long, is I get to come, and I get to see everyone, and I get to tell you how excited it is to be our 12th year. We're really becoming a staple in the community. We'd ask you to approve the event. We'll probably come back to you for one more resolution regarding fireworks, but right now, we're just asking for the noise ordinance to be waived, and us to be able to have the event.
Any questions?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
This is a great event, and I'd be happy to offer the approving resolution. It's kind of scary, because I remember the first time you came to council on this one, so.
Really?
Twelve years ago, so. But I'm happy to offer the approving, and I'd ask that it be placed on consent.
All right. Any objections? Anyone from the audience wishes to speak with that? It'll be placed on the consent agenda, Fred, so you don't need to come back. And we are all crossing our fingers, as I know everyone at the Basilica is, that by June, COVID-19 and concerns about large gatherings are well in the rearview mirror.
You know, I was, I was going to ask that question for some advice on that. I don't know if the city has any plans, or if something may happen, but if it does, and the city has some type of rule, or wants us to move in a different way, we will always do that. But as of now, we are ready to party and have a great time, June 18th through the 21st, and typical fun as every year. We'll have a little bit different setup this year, because there's a couple tent requirement changes and things like that that we're aware of, and we'll work with that. So thank you so much.
Well, we're looking forward to it, and the mayor was here at the regular meeting, gave an outstanding update on everything the city's doing. The governor had a press conference at 5:00 today, and I didn't have a chance to see it, but I understand she's asked, and correct me, please, our Director of Administrative Services, Mr. Dave Varga's here, she has asked that voluntarily organizations, until she, until she, until things change, where there are going to be more than 100 people, that they cancel those voluntarily. That's, you know, for the immediate term. The city has not imposed any, any requirements or restrictions at this time, so.
We'll look into it and see, you know, we'll, thank you for your advice, and we, if the city does take a position, and I will share with the board at the church the concerns of the state, and, you know, the goal is to have a healthy, successful event, and make sure everyone has happy and stays healthy. So we'll do whatever needs to be done.
We can't wait. Thanks, Fred.
Thank you so much.
Please give our best to Father George and everyone at the Basilica.
And thank you all.
All right. Item number three is a request to waive the sidewalk requirement. This comes to us from Neil and Teresa Garen for the newly constructed home at 1-6601 Harrison Street.
Are they here?
Is the petitioner here this evening?
Next study.
Pardon me?
Next study.
You don't want to just put it on the, on the regular?
Yeah, we could do it on the regular, but people need to show up, Madam Chair.
Well, they...
Yeah.
I'll leave it to the council's discretion, if they'd like to put it on the regular.
Madam President?
Yes?
I propose we put it on the regular. I agree, people need to show up, and we can give them the opportunity to do that there, and if it doesn't happen there, we can always punt it.
There we go. Okay.
All right, so that will be placed on the regular agenda, not the consent agenda, for the regular meeting of Monday, March 23rd. Item number four is appointment of Susan Harvey to the Plymouth Road Development Authority. This comes to us from the office of the mayor for a four-year term, which would expire on May 16th, 2024.
Good evening, Council President, and members of council, on behalf of Mayor Brosnan, we're thrilled to request your support, an appointment of Susan Harvey to the Plymouth Road Development Authority for a four-year term. She's been actively involved in property management since 1982. She's currently Senior Vice President of Ashley Capital LLC, which has made and continues to make a huge impact with their developments in Livonia, and many on Plymouth Road. She's involved with many professional organizations and charitable endeavors, including Alternatives for Girls and Adopt a Family, and she's here to answer any questions, should you have any.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Varga. Good evening, Ms. Harvey.
Hi.
Council? Yes, Councilmember Toy.
Thank you, if I may. Ms. Harvey, I'm very impressed that you serve with Alternative for Girls. That's such a crucial and great organization. Thank you for all you do on that. Appreciate it so much.
Thank you.
And I'll move an approving.
On consent. All right. Anyone else have any comments or questions for Ms. Harvey? We would love to hear from you, Ms. Harvey, if you have anything that you'd like to say.
Just that I'm, I'm happy to serve on this board. Ashley Capital's been investing in Livonia for, I guess, a little over 20 years. We have millions of square feet, and for us, Livonia sincerely is the gold standard for how a city should be run. We work in other communities that have struggled with their building departments, and actually have encouraged them to come here and copy what we consider our best practices in Livonia. So I'm happy to do this.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, that's on the consent agenda, so you don't need to come back. Thank you for your willingness to serve the city, and thank you for making Livonia the home for so much business that Ashley Capital does. We appreciate your company, and we appreciate you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item number five is a request to approve Specialized Services Transportation Operating Assistance Program, third-party contract for the period of October 2019 through September 30th between the City of Livonia and SMART. This comes to us from the Department of Community Resources, with grant funds to be used for the Livonia Community Transit Program, to provide lift-equipped transportation to the senior and disabled residents of the city. Good evening, Mrs. McCann.
Good evening. You've said it all, so I'm asking that this contract be approved. This is our yearly contract. This money comes from the state, from the Department of Transportation. SMART is just the authority that disperses the money, and we're getting a little extra this year. We're getting 3,600 more. This goes for our ADA services.
Good.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Councilmember Toy.
This has been done through the years, and excellent work, and excellent work by our Director, McCann, so I will offer an approving on consent.
Thank you. Any objections? All right. I don't think you need to come back unless you have other business to deal with us that evening, but, Mr. McCann, if you would please also, you know, extend our appreciation for the great job that's done with this program. And, as you know, over at the center a lot, and always stop by the Transportation Office, and that is a team, and under Felicia's leadership, of just exceptional people who work hard and really care about making sure that the people that need these services get them. So thank you.
Thank you. I'll pass that on.
Okay. Thank you so much. All right. Item number six is a request from Wayne County to close a portion of, I'm sorry, this is our request, to request permission from Wayne County to close a portion of Farmington Road to host Livonia's annual Memorial Day Ceremony. This comes to us from the Department of Parks and Recreation to close Farmington Road north and southbound from Five Mile to Roycroft on Saturday, May 23rd, 2020, from 8:30 a.m. to 10 a.m. Good evening, Mr. Davis.
Good evening, Council President. Ted Davis, representing Parks and Recreation, and Council President said it perfectly. We are asking Wayne County permission to close Five Mile Road, to close Farmington Road from Five to Roycroft, so asking council to approve that.
Madam President?
Yes, Councilman Jolly.
I'll offer an approving resolution for the consent agenda. This is an annual request to assist in a program put on by Parks and Rec that turns out as a really good way of honoring those who have served us and lost their lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments from the audience? Seeing none, we'll place it on the consent agenda. Mr. Davis?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Item number seven, don't go away, is also comes to us as an award bid, coming to us from the Department of Parks and Recreation, for tennis court reconstruction at Bicentennial Park from Wayne County Parks District Number Nine, grant funding, and from budgeted funds. Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Council President. We are asking that council award bicentennial tennis court and pickleball court construction to Nagel Paving for an amount, excuse me, not to exceed $359,164. They were the low bid on this project. Council had previously approved this as part of the Wayne County Parks Grant Package in Council Resolution 236-19. We are again asking that council award to Nagel Paving for this project. I'd be happy to answer any questions council might have.
Councilman Jolly?
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Davis, can you, obviously there are tennis courts that exist there now.
There are.
And you mentioned tennis court renovation and pickleball renovation. Can you explain to us what, what we have currently, and what we will have at the end of this project?
So we currently have eight courts at Bicentennial Park, eight tennis courts. We have four on east side, four on the west side of the park. With east side courts are going to remain tennis, and we're actually adding a drinking fountain there. The west side courts are going to be converted from four tennis to six pickleball courts, very similar to what we put in at Compton Park last year.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Madam President?
Yes, Councilmember Donavick?
I'd like to offer an approving resolution on consent, if that's okay.
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Varga.
No objection, just wanted to comment, as someone who frequently uses both of those, it's needed, and I think the pickleball is going to be a gigantic hit over there, so.
If Compton is any indication...
And not just with the seniors.
Yeah. If Compton is any indication, it's going to be a big deal over there. Thank you.
Can I add one other thing?
Yes, of course.
If one, if one thing has been true over the course of our experience, my experience here on council, it seems like you might be an advocate for the pickleball federation or something like that. I, I've never seen anybody lobby or make such a transition towards pickleball, and I understand you get that from your own set of constituents here, but...
Yes.
I'm starting to think of you as the pickleball representative. Maybe you have a future being a commissioner or something of the pickleball association.
Thank you, Councilman Jolly.
It's quite an honor.
It is. I'll try to keep that in check. Thank you, though.
All right. Anyone else? All right, well, that's placed on the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Mr. Davis, thank you very much. Item number eight, this is an award of bid. This request comes to us from the Division of Police for renovation of Main Dispatch and Emergency Operations Dispatch Center, some budgeted funds. Good evening again, Chief.
Good evening, Madam President, members of council. This item before you is requesting your approval to award a contract to Huntington Construction for the renovation of our main dispatch. As you all know, our main dispatch is a standalone dispatch for the city of Livonia. It operates 24/7/365. The last time that we have visited the, the dispatch center and any kind of renovation was 23 years ago, so it's well due for an upgrade. This will include an upgrade electrical system and floor plan, expanding the dispatch center from current three positions to four positions. In addition to that, we are also going to modify our backup dispatch, which is adjacent to our EOC. Currently, that dispatch room consists of two, two positions, and that will be doubled in size to four. So essentially, the, the backup will be very, almost a complete duplicate of what we have at the main center, so that, God forbid, that we have to activate for the EOC for an emergency situation, we'll have the ability to do that. This project was, the specs of this project was developed and put on mitten, and the potential bidders had a mandatory walkthrough on December 12th, and as a result of that, there were two qualified sealed bids that were received by the clerk's office by the deadline of January 14th, 2020. The bids were opened at that meeting, and the, it is our recommendation that Huntington Construction Company in Southfield has awarded the project at a cost of $77,021, which includes a variety of upgrades to that room. I'm happy to say, as well as company representative Scott Spencer is with us here in the audience today, so if council has questions specific to either the specs or the construction or the company itself, he'd be happy to address those. It's noteworthy that the funds for this project are not general fund monies, they are restricted in use, and those are 9/11 funds, 911 funds that are in a separate account, that are specific for either dispatcher training or personnel, specific to those responsibilities and the equipment. So that is, it's certainly a nice benefit in this, in this situation. Therefore, I'm requesting council's approval to award this, the bid, to Huntington Construction so that we may begin this project.
Council?
Madam President?
Yes, Councilperson McCullough.
Chief Gate, I was just looking through, obviously, 22 years. It sounds like it's something long overdue. I will be in full support of this project. Do you, the question that I'm sure will pop up, and I'm sure you have a plan for it, is the cut over. Do you have any, any idea if there's going to be a downtime when you transition?
There will be no downtime. The, the timing of this project will be one room at a time, so we'll prepare the backup first, and have that work completed, and then, once that is complete, then we will do the cut over, and it'll be seamless. That's our goal, of course. Just one other point to add to this as well, is that we were able to save really tens of thousands of dollars on this project by acquiring some dispatch equipment from another agency due to their consolidation, and that, that will assist us in getting this up and running and completed in a, in a much more timely fashion as well. So it saves us a significant sum of money, and, and then the, the time allocation to that as well.
Sounds like a great project. I will offer an approving resolution for consent.
Thank you, Councilmember McCullough. Vice President Varga?
Forgive me if I should know this, but you mentioned the 911 budget category. Is that, is that a federally funded, a state funded, or is that our, our funds?
It's our, it's our funds. We receive a portion of the collected 911 funds on an annual basis, and there was, it's a surcharge on all of our phones that we, we are forced to pay, quite frankly, and, and I can't give you the exact number, and I think that varies year to year anyways, but we receive backup of that or funding from the state in that regard.
So it's those, that's what makes up that funding, is that surcharge that's on our phones?
That's exactly right.
That's all of that funding?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Right. That will be placed on consent, Chief, and this is work that I'm sure updates, that the dispatch team will be happy to have, because it's not just freshening everything, right? It's, they work, they have, as we all know, very difficult and stressful jobs, and the equipment is old, right, and it's no longer really an optimal work situation. You have all made certainly the best of it, but those are difficult jobs, and so this upgrade, I can only imagine will be welcomed by our excellent dispatch.
Thank you for pointing that out. I, just a quick shout out to our dispatch crew. They are second to none, and, you know, so many times, you know, when I'm speaking to different groups, and you call 911, and these folks on the other end, I mean, it's just a voice, but they do a phenomenal job in, in directing the, the emergency assistance that's needed for so many folks, whether they're residents, or they're, or they're visitors, or business owners, and making quick assessments and getting the resources there to help mitigate their, their situation. They're a great, great team of professionals. Thank you.
And just one other thing, we know that at times like this, when there's stress related to health or safety, that their volume, right, tends to go up with people that are panicked, and, and so we're really thinking of them and appreciating, along with all of our first responders, at situations like these, additional stress, it goes, it flows right through to the dispatch. Do you mean all of your support personnel for that?
Madam Chair?
Yes?
Madam Chair, if I may, you know, we, we compliment our first responders, particularly our police department, but they wouldn't be there and have the kind of attitudes and forth thoughts that they do have without good leadership. And I want to congratulate Chief Cade on all the work he's done. He looks too young to have it for 40-some years, no offense, but honestly, Chief, thank you for your leadership in that department. We are so proud of it, and we're proud of you that have led that department for so long. Thank you.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. It's, it's a blessing. I appreciate it very much.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Jolly had a question, I believe.
Thank you. So a, a question, and then a request, depending on the answer to the question. Will this new equipment facilitate the text to 911 services?
Yes.
And I would presume as much, right? Can you give us a reminder, just because we're on the topic, of how one would do that, if someone needs to text 911 if they're in a given situation?
Correct. Yes, we, we, we have the capability now, and really through Conference of Western Wayne, for text to 911. And call if you can, text if you can't, is really the motto. And it's, it's been a great program. We're, we're not receiving many texts for 911, which is good, but the, the process, and really the future of 911 is evolving, with, pretty soon, there'll be video to 911, photo to 911, and we're ramping up for those new challenges in technology. But the text to 911 will seamlessly transition over to each one of the dispatch centers. They'll have the duplicate capability on each centers, and I'm not sure if I answered that at all, but...
It's great information, but the, the actual process of texting to 911, do they literally just send a text to 911?
Correct.
Okay, there's no additional number needed or anything like that?
Correct.
Okay, and that gets routed directly as a 911 call, anyway?
That's exactly right. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Just one final thing. Thank you to the representative from Huntington for being here tonight. I always appreciate that, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item number nine is a request for authorization to purchase, and I should have asked you how to say this before, because I'm going to struggle, install four ZIBICs, pardon me? I thought we did. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah. We did. Okay. Request for authorization to purchase and install four ZIBICs, dispatch workstations through the Houston-Galveston Area Council HGAC Cooperative Consortium. This comes to us from the Division of Police to replace current dispatch workstations and related equipment from budgeted funds.
Thank you, Madam President, members of council. This is really a piggyback request for the project itself, and this deals with the workstations and really the furniture for the unit. We're requesting a waiver of the sealed bid process to allow us to utilize the Houston-Galveston Area Council Cooperative Consortium in lieu of the bid, and piggyback basically those prices. The, the outline of, of this furniture is in this document here, and again, the funds to purchase this equipment is $69,586.75, and again, we'll be using those same funds that I alluded to with the earlier request, the 911 funds that are specific in nature.
Council?
Madam President?
Yes, Councilmember McCullough.
You were correct. It is ZIBIC.
Thank you.
So I have bandwidth with the ZIBIC product, and I can tell you that, from a dispatch perspective, this is, this is pretty much the best solution out there. It's ergonomical, the desks go up and down, they have means for six-plus monitors, if I'm right, so I would have no problem offering an approving resolution for consent.
All right. Anyone else, council? All right, seeing none, we'll place that on the consent agenda, Chief.
Thank you.
Item number 11, this is a request for authorization to purchase two marked semi-marked police vehicles utilizing counties of Oakland and Macomb Consortium. I think you skipped one. We're on the one for the, the... Oh, unmarked. Thank you. Number 10, request for authorization to purchase four unmarked police vehicles utilizing state of Michigan and counties of Oakland and Macomb Consortium bid pricing.[1724.83] This too comes from the Division of Police, and this will also be from budgeted funds. Chief?
Thank you, Madam President, members of council. This is an annual request for vehicle replacement, and as mentioned in the letter, this is for four unmarked vehicles, requesting your authorization for the purchase and the waiver of the sealed bid process by utilizing the vehicle consortiums through the state of Michigan, counties of Wayne, okay, I'm sorry, county of Oakland and the county of Macomb. And when it comes to vehicle purchases, we review the prices of the vehicles we're interested in on those three consortiums, pick the lowest bid regardless of consortium, and recommend that for council's approval. So, we are budgeted, as mentioned, for $160,000 for these four vehicles. We would be utilizing, with your approval, $142,213.
Madam President?
Yes, Councilmember Donavick.
It's important for these sorts of vehicles to be utilized for our police department for proactive policing, so I would like to offer an approving resolution on consent.
Thank you. Any concerns? Vice President Barr?
For this and the next item, Chief, just a general question, do we ever consider looking at low mileage certified used vehicles for these? Or is there a, I mean, I understand the appeal of having new, and I understand the risks that you're dealing with, but I just wonder if that's something that's ever looked at?
We have looked at that. I've spoken to our finance director about that and even leasing potential for some of our vehicles, and we hang on to our cars basically until they're falling apart or and/or pass them down to other departments when we can. And, you know, with the warranty process that we're buying new and the way that these vehicles are utilized, we have found that to be the best way to go. But we've looked at different options, you know, what's the most cost-effective, best bang for the buck, and those discussions are really ongoing.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
All right. We have an approving resolution on consent offered by Councilman Donavick for the four unmarked police vehicles. Any concerns, anyone from the audience? All right, with that, we'll move along to item number 11. This is a request for authorization to purchase two marked semi-marked police vehicles utilizing counties of Oakland and Macomb Consortium bid pricing. Comes to us from the Division of Police, also from budgeted funds. Chief?
Thank you, Madam President, members of council. This item before you is a request, as indicated, to purchase two vehicles. One will be a marked vehicle, one will be a semi-marked vehicle. The marked vehicle is scheduled to be a 2020 Chevrolet Tahoe, and we, again, we're utilizing the vehicle consortium bids that are available to us, and for that vehicle, we would be utilizing the Oakland County bid in the amount of $37,224. The other vehicle that we are proposing to purchase will replace a similar van that is 20 years old, and this vehicle, we would be utilizing the Macomb County bid in the amount of $43,034, and thus requesting your authorization to waive the bid process and purchase these vehicles utilizing budgeted funds.
Madam Chair? Yes? Happy to offer an approving on this for consent. Any objections? Anyone from the audience? One thing that I'd just like to point out about the last three items, which all asked for waiving the sealed bid process, and to explain to people that sometimes when you hear waiving a bid process, the thought is, oh, you're giving it to a preferential vendor. That's not at all the case. We waived the bid process because we were able to obtain pricing through these consortiums that we could not meet just going by ourselves to a single, one vendor coming just as our department, that we, essentially, it's volume pricing.
That's absolutely correct. It's cost-effective for us to piggyback these other bids, if you will, rather than do a whole bid process on our own.
Yep, so that's, I'd just like to point that out, because I think sometimes people are concerned why you're waiving a bid process.
Thank you.
But that's why, when you're consortium, because we're getting a volume discount. All right, I think that's it, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Item number 12, this is an award of bid. Comes to us from the Engineering Division for the 2020 Asphalt Road Paving Program. This is contract 28 from budgeted funds. Mr. Lear?
Yes, this is the first of, I guess, our yearly road paving programs that we come back. This year, we went out for bids. We opened up the bids from Mitten on February 18th. We had two bidders for our asphalt program. Once again, Nagel Paving was our low bidder. They've done our program for the past four or five years, and we've been pretty satisfied with what they're doing. So, we'd like approval to award a contract in the amount of $3,836,109.85 to Nagel Paving for this year's asphalt program.
All right, counsel. Would you like to offer that on consent agenda?
Yes, please.
All right, anyone for approval, correct?
Yeah, so moved, yep.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Lear on the asphalt paving program? Anyone from the audience like to comment? All right, seeing none, Mr. Lear, we'll place that on the consent agenda for the March 23rd meeting. Item number 13 is a request to amend the contract with OHM Advisors for Construction Engineering Services for the 2020 Asphalt Road Paving, for the 2020 Asphalt Road Program. This is also contract 28. This comes also from the Engineering Division. Mr. Lear?
Yes, in conjunction with the road paving for asphalt that you just approved, we'd like approval to extend the OHM Advisors' contract through the QBS system, and basically, they've done this asphalt program, construction and administration for a dozen years or so, and basically, we'd like approval to award a contract of $460,333 in association with this project.
Madam President?
Yes, Councilmember Donavick.
I'd like to offer an approving resolution for the consent agenda. OHM's been a good, great partner through the years. They're a Livonia business, and I think it's the appropriate thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments? All right, seeing none, we'll place it on the consent agenda, and again, I'd like to thank Mr. Lock from OHM for making sure to be here in the event there were any questions. Thank you. Item number 15 is a request to, no, item number 14. This comes to us from the Engineering Division for the 2020 Concrete Road Repair Program, contract 28 from budgeted funds. Mr. Lear?
Yes, like our asphalt program, this one is for our yearly concrete program. Once again, we put bids, went out for bids on Mitten and opened them on February 18th. We actually had six bidders, of which Hard Rock Concrete was once again the low bidder. They've as well done our concrete road program for the past four or five years, and we've had good results with their work. So, we'd like approval to award a contract of $4,045,019.25 to Hard Rock Concrete.
Madam President?
Yes, Councilmember Donavick?
I'd like to offer an approving resolution for consent, but I do have a question for Mr. Lear, if that's appropriate.
Sure.
Since my time on council, many, many months now, all of a sudden, I get emails about road repair. Two months? People ask me about their neighborhood roads, and I actually told resident, "Watch tonight, there's going to be some discussion about it." So, if they are watching, they probably aren't, where would a resident go, for instance, they had a complaint about their road or their sidewalk and whatnot, where would they talk to, or who would they speak to?
Okay, every other year, we drive all the sections of road in the city. We do a rating system that's basically handed down from the state, that we, they work with their rating system. From that, we get a rating in a kind of a hit list of the road segments or areas that we want to try and do the most. We typically will have a public meeting in October-ish or August, somewhere in there, for residents to come and voice their concerns for specific road segments if they would like. We will work with the, our engineering consultants, either AEW or OHM Advisors, to put together what we think would be the best road segments to do for the following year, and then we fine-tune it through the public meeting process at the end of the summer.
Be successful in business.
And that's kind of how the list gets put together. So, if they have concerns about their road segments, most likely, we are already aware of what's going on, and we typically have lists of, you know, how we want to proceed, but they could send letters to the Engineering Department, and we could invite them to the road committee meeting in the end of the summer as well.
Thank you for your thoughtful answer. I appreciate it, Mr. Lear.
Madam President?
Yes, Councilmember Jolly?
So, you talked about the Pacer ratings. All the Pacer ratings for the city are available on the website, correct?
They are, yes.
And it really impresses constituents when you pull that up and you say, "I see exactly on the map that they've rated your particular piece of street a certain Pacer rating," right?
Yes, if you go to the Engineering website, we have the 2018 Pacer ratings, and later this summer, we'll have the 20s on there.
Thank you, Councilman Jolly. I appreciate it.
Just always trying to help you out.
Thank you, Mr. Lear.
All right. Okay, so we have that on the consent. Now, we go on to item number 15. This is a request to amend the contract with Anderson, Eckstein, and Westrick for the Construction Engineering, for Construction Engineering Services for the 2020 Concrete Road Program. This is contract 28. This comes to us from the Engineering Division also, and this is Council Resolution 365-16. Mr. Lear?
Okay, in conjunction with the Concrete Road Paving Program, we'd like to award a contract to Anderson, Eckstein, and Westrick to do the construction engineering portion of the project. They've been our consultants on this program for a dozen years or so, and basically, we would like approval to award them a contract of $528,000 based on the overall concrete road program price.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Councilmember Toy.
They have done an excellent job with us. I think that's why they're being recommended as well, so I'm going to offer an approving, if I may, on consent.
All right, any concerns or any comments from the council, anyone from the audience? Yes, Mr. Lockwood. No, please, and thank you for joining us here tonight.
My apologies, I'm sure you all would like to move along, and I won't speak long at all. I would just like to say, while you're considering it, Anderson, Eckstein, and Westrick truly appreciates this program. I've said this many times to almost all of you, a couple of you are hearing it for the first time. This program, you know, we work in over 30 different municipalities. It, kind of, to steal Ms. Harvey's comment, it is the gold standard of local road mileage programs, and we thoroughly appreciate being part of the team. OHM, your guys' engineering team, the council, we really, we've tweaked it over the years, and we appreciate how important it is, because this is a project that gets voted by the people, and if it wasn't for doing a, you know, top-notch job, it's very likely this project may not succeed, and we, you know, we just thoroughly appreciate the opportunity, so.
Thank you so much, Scott. Really appreciate your being here, and I make this point to the fact that firms that have done business with Livonia for a long time, you're, you know, you're being recommended again. Senior people from your organizations, you, coming from a long way, always make the point to be here. It's appreciated and it's noted, and thank you very much. Councilman Jolly?
Can I just add, so I gave praise to OHM, and AEW deserves the same praise, but you get just a little bit more if you move to Livonia.
You have an office in Livonia.
Oh, do you?
Yeah, at Six Mile and Farming Town.
Oh, yeah, right. You work at that office, though?
Well, I do appreciate it, though. Their headquarters in Livonia, and they deserve the praise for that. I completely agree with that.
You can move your headquarters here.
That would be a little trickier. We're renovating it right now.
There's a lot of buildings in East End, Livonia, come on by.
We'll put it on our consideration.
Pure pressure.
All right, just one other comment.
Mr. Lear, you always do arrange it, though, to make sure that we're really paying attention. I've made this point before, we have Mark Lock from OHM, and we have Scott Lockwood from AEW, so I want you to understand that we were paying attention, we got it all right. I know that you get called Mark Lockwood, he gets called Scott Lock, every variation, but thank you, and we were paying attention. So, thanks again, Scott.
Thank you.
All right, item number 16 is also a request to amend the contract with Anderson, Eckstein, and Westrick for Design and Construction Engineering Services for the 2020 Construction, Design and Construction Engineering Services for the 2020 Concrete Road Maintenance Selective Slab Program. This is contract 28. This comes to us from the Engineering Division. This is Council Resolution also 365-16. Mr. Lear?
Okay, item 16 actually will go with item 17 that you'll look at in just a minute. It's kind of backwards. This one is the approval, well, it's the agenda. This one is awarding the contract for the Construction Administration for the Selective Slab slash Concrete Maintenance Program, and once again, this is a project that we did last year, had very good results with it. This is a kind of a not full road reconstruction. This is where we're doing smaller sections where we can, where you have a single tree heaving and maybe just a few slabs instead of having to do a whole road. So, we grouped basically 20, 25 locations a year, and then some larger ones, but still not full road. And we started this last year, it went pretty well, we've honed a couple of the procedures on it, and we're looking to extend the contractor for it, which will be the next item, but in association with that, we'd like to approve a contract in the amount of $103,125 to AEW for the construction management.
All right, counsel? Madam Chair, I'll offer an approving resolution on consent. All right, thank you, Ms. White. Counsel, any questions? Anyone from the audience? Seeing none, we will go ahead and place that on the consent agenda. Item number, now we go to item number 17. This is a request to waive the formal bidding process and approve the 2020 Concrete Road Maintenance Selective Slab Program by extending contract 19-J unit prices with L. Anthony Construction Incorporated. This comes to us from the Engineering Division for contract 28, with the exception of tree removal prices, which include up to 25 locations throughout the city from budgeted funds. Mr. Lear?
Yes, as I had mentioned previously, we started this program last year for targeting specific, smaller locations that don't require a full road construction. L. Anthony was the low bidder last year, they did a very good job. We had good results. They've agreed to extend their contract prices for this year, so we do not see an advantage to going out for bids again. There was one item, as far as tree removals and restoration, that we had some issues with, so we've massaged the procedure for doing that, and that is really the only item that has changed price-wise. So, we'd like approval to award a contract of $694,247.50 to L. Anthony contract.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lear. Vice President Barr?
I think maybe one of...
No, I'm sorry, I misread that. Actually, the contract looks for $825,000 is what the contract is. The bid last year was 694.
Thank you.
As much as we like seeing from budgeted funds, not too far behind that is liking to see an extension of contract prices, so I'd offer approving for this for consent.
All right, thank you, Vice President Barr. Counsel, questions? Anyone from the audience? Seeing none, we'll place that on the consent agenda. Thank you. Item number 18 is a request to approve an intergovernmental agreement between the Charter County of Wayne and the City of Livonia. This too comes to us from the Engineering Division for the improvements of Merriman Road from Plymouth Road to Schoolcraft Road to Plymouth Road, with the proposed city's participation to be estimated at 9.075% in the amount of $148,558 from budgeted funds. Mr. Lear?
Yes, this is a, I guess, a needed relief. The Wayne County has decided they're going to replace or fix a section of Merriman Road between Plymouth Road and Schoolcraft. Their estimated project is $1,637,000 with the percentage of 9.075 coming from the City of Livonia. So, in order to proceed with the project, we'd like approval to enter into the intergovernmental agreement to spend $148,558.
Counsel?
Madam President?
Yes, Councilmember McCullough.
Do they have a timetable when they think they'd be doing this project?
We haven't seen any updated timetables yet. I think they're still out bid-wise or getting their various paperwork together. I would assume this is probably going to be mid to late summer before they get out there.
Again, this is a much-needed road reconstruction zone. I know we were talking north of Schoolcraft was an issue, now south is definitely, it's nice to see this project pushed forward, and the city's contribution of only 9%, I don't see any issues. I'd like to offer an approving resolution for consent.
Madam President, I have a question.
Yes, Councilmember Donavick?
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Lear, just a quick question about this. Is this just resurfacing a few inches on the top, or are they actually going to go down to the bedrock and...
It's not going to be a complete reconstruction. They're going to be doing some slab replacement, mostly joint, where they'll cut out the joints and replace those, and then do a cap over the top of it. They will be, we requested that they completely replace some of the industrial approaches in certain areas instead of trying to cap them, which really wouldn't work, so, but for the most part, they're going to try and take care of the underlying issues and then put a cap on it to extend the life.
And when they do redo those industrial approaches and entryways into businesses, are businesses on the hook for paying for any of that at that moment, or no?
No, that is included with the contract price from Wayne County.
Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Toy.
If I made a Mr. Lear, Mr. Lear, this is off-topic a little bit.
Okay.
But I got to ask it. Woodring, where our new urologist...
Oh, sure.
Can somebody please look into that road situation over there? Every time I come down, it angers me more and more with all the potholes. And it's, you know, I mean, it does a beautiful building, or whoever did it, blah, blah, blah. And then, you know, there's parking on either side of that road. Meanwhile, it's bumpier, it looks, you know, really bad.
Yes, it does. And the problem with that section of Woodring from Five Mile to roughly behind the buildings itself, it's actually private property. It's not a city road.
Right.
So, we have no jurisdiction to make them fix that unless it somehow falls, I guess, under a public safety issue. The downside to it would be, you know, from what I could see, they could barricade it and basically say that no one could get through. We tried to get them to pave that when they were doing the urology clinic. But the property owner on the east side was not willing to pay for their section. And the urology clinic, we couldn't force them to pave someone else's property.
Right, right.
And then, we cannot take city funds to pave private property as well.
No, I get that.
So, we're, I guess, caught between the law department and the private property rights.
Well, in the future, there may be something wrong with their building or something. You know what I mean?
If it falls into a vacant and abandoned, or...
Our very capable city attorney has maybe a solution.
If I might, I've talked...
Mr. Burney.
Oh, sorry.
I've talked to Mr. Hannah, the Director of Inspections. That's something that's on our radar.
Okay, good.
We have had a lot of conversations with the owners of the urology clinic. And quite frankly, they don't have a permanent certificate of occupancy yet.
Oh, okay.
And as far as we're concerned, that that road condition, the way it is, doesn't make that a safe building. And we've had that conversation with them, that something's going to have to be resolved between them and the owners across the street, whether that's enforcement actions against them. Those two people need to come together and solve the problems. And we are going to force that. We couldn't force the issue after a certain period of time because of the asphalt. We just couldn't get it.
Sure.
So, we indicated to both parties, come spring, we are going to deal with both of them. Unfortunately, that is not city property. Everybody thinks it is. It's treated like city property. For some reason that I don't want to get into now, the city decided to give that away to both sides at one time. But it's created a lot of problems.
No, it has for that neighborhood, too. And I think it was another council in their great wisdom, you know.
There was nobody on this present council who did that.
No, not on the present.
I'm not sure half the people were alive when that happened.
Yes, sir. Well, thank you very much, and thank you for your indulgence as well, Mr. Lear.
Madam President.
Did you have something else to say, Mr.?
I do not.
Vice President Barr?
I'm surprised, I did not realize that was private property, like a lot of people. How, I assume not all of Woodring Street is that way. It's only this section?
What happened was, many, many years ago...
I'm not trying to make you get into it all that...
No, the city fathers decided to vacate the property to have to each side. Why they did that is beyond me, but they did it. But they maintained an easement for the public use to go through there. So, while the public has the right to use it, we don't own it. And that was one of the problems is, luckily for them, I guess, we didn't get much snow this winter because they thought that we were going to continue to plow that for them. And we told them, as long as that road remains like that, we're not plowing anything for them. Plus, it creates a liability problem because of the way they have the cars parked on the side of the road. It's not our property.
So, my question was, though, as you get past what's now the urology center, at that point, it becomes public property.
Yeah, right where the houses start. Right where the houses start, that becomes public property.
Because I, I'm glad Councilwoman Toy brought this up. I just pulled it up on Google. I'm not sure I've ever seen a worse piece of road in Livonia. I'm stunned.
And it's even worse because the urology clinic paved half of it. And so, you've got a distinct line of where it's, looks like an area has been bombed out and an area that's been paved over.
Now, on another note, the green trees and green grass looks awesome. So, I'm looking for it.
Right, right.
Yeah, that is on our radar.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing that up, Councilmember Toy. All right, and we did have, we did have an approving on consent, correct?
Yes.
All right. Number nineteen is a proposed amendment to the Livonia Code of Ordinances as amended. This comes to us from the Department of Law to amend Title VI, Animals, repealing Chapters Zero Four Dogs, Zero Five Reserved, Zero Six Cats, and Zero Seven Vicious Animals, and Zero Eight Miscellaneous Regulations to consolidate the ordinances in order to ensure the proper care and control of animals. Mr. Burney.
Thank you. The reason we brought this, we, the way we're proposing is a little different than normal, where we do the red lines through different subjects. We found that the way it's currently set up with the four different sections now, it made it almost impossible to red them out and then to put them in and consolidate them. So, we thought it was easier to repeal what we have now, using that which works, and putting it into a new section of the chapter. So, a lot of the items that were in Title VI are still in Title VI. They're just in a different area of Title VI. And so, the idea was, we were trying to consolidate them because it didn't make much sense to us to have a different section for cats and dogs when, in essence, the regulations were the same, or basically the same. Yet sometimes they were contradictory, and they didn't make a lot of sense. In addition, we had a separate section that dealt with vicious animals and a section that dealt with miscellaneous items. So, we tried to put it in together in one section that made sense. Some of the big changes that we have were our, as Councilmember White will tell you, and Councilmember Jolly will tell you, having said that as a magistrate, everything that we had in there was a violation previously, was a misdemeanor or a criminal act. I'll tell you, it's hard to sit there in court every day with a resident who has an unlicensed dog and tell them that they've been charged with a crime for having an unlicensed dog. We looked at some of the regulations and thought it didn't make a lot of sense to us to have our residents be criminals for some of these events. So, the thought process on some of these is to change them to civil infractions. For instance, if we have a progressive discipline, if you would. If, for instance, you have an unlicensed dog, the first offense is a civil infraction with a lower fine. The second time, it's a civil infraction with a greater time. And if you don't learn by the second time, then maybe you are a criminal and it is a misdemeanor. So, it's a progression. And, you know, the thought process behind this is, we don't want to make people criminals. We want to make them follow the rules and follow the laws for the safety of all. So, we have changed a lot of those when it comes to the unlicensed dogs, the dog, the animals at large, the barking animals, a few of those, to change them into a system like that. We've also changed dealing with the, what we called vicious animals before, to calling them dangerous animals now. It's always been confusing for defendants and for attorneys and for prosecutors in what is and isn't considered a dangerous animal and when somebody is, when an animal is a dangerous animal and the person is liable for that. So, what we have done, previously, we had an animal review board that was supposed to sit and listen and make this distinction. In my seven years here, we've done it once. And you had to drag the different people out screaming to have the hearing. It wasn't a practical solution. We prefer just to keep it in the court as it is, and charge somebody, whether it's a potentially vicious or a vicious dog. We've changed that a little bit. Those are still misdemeanors. The penalties have changed. And quite frankly, a vicious animal is one that has attacked and done serious injury to an animal or a person. A potentially vicious is one that has done injury, but not necessarily a serious injury to either. Or if we know that the, if it's viciously chasing someone but doesn't bite, it might be a potential. And we've changed some of the penalties in that. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about anything in particular. But it's designed to be a rewrite to make it, make a little more sense, reduce some penalties, increase some penalties, and make it a little user-friendly.
Madam President.
Thank you, Madam President.
Yes, Councilmember Jolly.
I will go on the record and say that during my time at the district court, the animal cases are the ones that get the most, the most emotional and intense. And they're very difficult to deal with in all regards. And everybody who is involved, whether as a victim or a defendant. So, this will help alleviate some of that stress, and I can understand that. So, my one question, though, is, we, as a council, have been getting a lot of emails, and I know you have as well, in regards to requiring dogs and animals to be leashed in the city. Was that, just for the record here, because I, this is something that's an ongoing conversation, and I think the individual has probably reached out to other people at this point.
Yes.
Can you tell us what the thought process was in regards to leashes and requiring them?
The thought process and now dealing with it is historically, council, whenever we try to put in an actual leash law, the crowd is full, and it doesn't happen. For whatever reason, we, the leash law just doesn't seem to be a popular thing in the City of Livonia. So, what the leash law currently is, is you have to have your dog on leash or under reasonable control. The only place we have a leash law in the city is in our city parks, or on city property. Not on the school property, not on private property. But on the Livonia Parks property, we have a leash law. Other than that, it just has to be on leash or under reasonable control. And if it's not under reasonable control, it fits into the dog-at-large, or cat-at-large, or animal-at-large provision. We, I, I guess, myself and the animal control officers, we deliberately didn't deal with that because we wanted to get this package passed. And we thought if it was something controversial like that, it may cause a problem. Personally, I'm all in favor of a leash law, but that's, I don't have a vote.
But, but like you said here, and I appreciate all of that, and I think it's good to have that on the record, there is circumstance within the Livonia ordinances to charge if there is a problem for a dog-at-large.
Absolutely.
So, there is a remedy within the ordinance if the police department or the animal control officer deems it to be necessary?
It can be even under this. Currently, it's a misdemeanor for the dog to be at large. If this passes, if it's just your typical dog running down the ravine, causing no problem, it would be a civil infraction the first two times, a misdemeanor the third time. If it's an animal that's chasing or menacing or trying to harm somebody, it's, it could be a potentially vicious dog, which is a misdemeanor right off the bat. I think one of the things that a lot of people, because we've been getting the same emails that you guys, that the council members get, they don't understand the distinction between our property that we control and school property, and private property that we have no control over. We cannot, unless the Livonia Public Schools or the church that owns the property wants us to do something with it, we have no authority over it. And that's, that's where the letters are coming in. I will add that there were a few things we added in there. And you, council, if you have any questions on it, you can take a look at about bird feeding and a few other things.
I'll offer an approving resolution.
Vice President Barr?
Just to further clarify, Paul.
Yes.
The, those last items you talked about, about, you know, if a dog were causing a problem, or all the circumstances that you just laid out there in the last minute and a half, those are out of our jurisdiction on school property as well? Or if there's a problem with the dog, does that...
No, there's, if it's a vicious dog or potentially vicious dog, we still have jurisdiction over it.
But it's not school property?
Right, because that's a dog that has attacked and caused damage to another. Okay? We would have that, it is the leash law that we have the problem, the dog-at-large on the private property.
Okay. Have, I feel like I know the answer to this from my time in council, but I'm not remembering. Have we officially talked to Livonia Public Schools about this? Have you, or maybe some other council members have? I can't recall.
I've never...
Official conversation on that.
I've never talked to the Livonia Public Schools. I'm not sure if anybody officially has. I know, I know there has been a conversation between the gentleman who writes the letters to the schools. And I just don't think the school, personally, they, I don't think the school has any great interest in the issue.
I know I've raised it to school board members, but it's been in passing. It hasn't been any, I have another question, but I think Mr. Jolly wants to respond to that. And I'd be happy to yield to him for a second.
Well, I think Councilmember White maybe had a comment.
My only comment was, I absolutely concur in the comments of Mr. Burney and Mr. Jolly, Councilmember Jolly, about how these cases are handled in court. And I think these changes are a great step forward. A lot of these, the language of these ordinances has been around forever and ever and ever, maybe even before there was such a thing as a civil infraction. So, I commend the law department for bringing this to our attention.
Thank you.
And also, on the, on the subject of the leash, a leash law, yes, there's a lot of history in, with prior councils, when you bring this forward at the request of a resident, all of a sudden, you're labeled as either an animal hater or an animal lover. And it, it brings out the same kind of emotions that come out in the court on these cases, only in a much larger scale to fill this auditorium, so.
That's true.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember White.
I was just going to, I think some of the confusion for the residents in regards to us not having jurisdiction at school property is, because oftentimes, on school property, especially the parks that abut the school property that are owned by LPS, they have signs posted that the authority for the sign is actually Livonia ordinance, dot, 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 dot. So, people see those, and I think it just confuses the situation altogether. And I, for what it's worth, I think that might be part of the problem.
Vice President Barr?
If, if hypothetically, the schools were to take this on and have the same requirements on their land that we have in our public parks, would it be our responsibility as a city to enforce that?
Well, it's like any other...
Or do they have to enforce that?
No, we could enforce it. We would probably choose to enforce it as a trespass, though. Because if they're, if they're putting up signs saying that you're not allowed to have your dogs on this property, that's, that's a refusal to allow. So, we would probably enforce it more on a trespassing than we would at the dog-at-large because it is still private property. I think we probably could, but my guess is we'd probably more enforce it as a trespass.
The schools are private?
The schools are private as far as we're concerned.
Okay, got it, got it.
Because they're not ours.
Yeah, I, I'll just say for the record that I don't see why the schools should be treating their property any differently we treat our public parks. And as somebody who has walked specifically through the woods at Rotary with my kids and been legitimately nervous because of the dogs that are running free in there, I understand the concerns that have been expressed to us. And it, it really frustrates me, frankly, that our schools exempt themselves from that. And so, I just, for the record, I'm going to call out the school board and say, I think they should be doing something about this. I, leaving that topic, I do have a question, one other question related to this item. I was surprised in your summary, I read a good portion, if not all, of your ordinance changes, or at least scanned it. But this came from the summary, where you talked about putting a hunting ban. I was surprised that that didn't exist already. Can you elaborate on that for me?
I hesitate to mention this on TV because I know on my next-door neighbor what he wants to do. It is illegal to fire a firearm in the City of Livonia. It is not illegal to shoot a bow and arrow in the City of Livonia. So, I have a lot of deer in my backyard, and I've got this prize twelve-point buck back there that my neighbor is salivating over. There are no DNR regulations prohibiting hunting in Livonia. So, right now, if my neighbor wants to deal with me during hunting season, he could shoot my twelve-point buck in the backyard.
Your twelve-point buck.
My twelve-point buck. And my wife would be mad at me, so. So, we're putting that hunting ban in for that. So, no, the reason is, is it creates a problem. Somebody could do it if they wanted to. There are no regulations that prohibit it because it's not a firearm.
And so, even with this ordinance change, that's still the case?
We're going to prohibit hunting in the City.
Period.
Period, in the City of Livonia.
Okay. I think that twelve-point buck might be going back and forth between our houses, Paul.
He's a beauty.
I'm all set, thanks.
One other question, on the hunting ban, is that a misdemeanor or a civil infraction if you violate that?
I believe the hunting is a, and I have to check, but I'm pretty sure it's a misdemeanor on that one.
Thank you.
In fact, I'm positive it's a misdemeanor on that one.
Councilmember McCullough?
Just one clarification, back to the leash and under control. You did say that city parks, we do require a leash.
We have an absolute leash law in city parks.
I'm, I'm with you to maybe reach, I've tried to reach out to the schools. I know we're all talking about the same resident. I've been out there, I've seen, and it is somewhat concerning. And I did send a few emails. So, yeah, taking it offline and maybe seeing if they could adopt.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Just one comment on leash laws and, you know, understanding why people believe that there should be leash laws and that animals should have to be leashed in the city. The other issue is, in addition to all the people that show up to, you know, to oppose that, is, given the reality of limited police resources, we don't, we can't enforce our leash laws in our parks. I live right, we live right behind with a... I live right, we live right behind with one of the nature preserves, city nature preserves behind us. I mean, the dogs are, you know, people have their dogs off the leashes constantly, right, which is disruptive for a lot of reasons, you know, and we have wonderful responsive police officers that come to your house, right, for anything, but calling them and saying, you know, "Two minutes ago, I just saw somebody going through the preserve with a dog off a leash," you know, so I do think that sometimes we need to consider the practicality, too, of going through the trouble of amending ordinances, and you want to be principled, but you also have to think of the practicality of it, so, that's my point. All right. We had a, we had an approving offered, not for consent for the regular, which seems, right?
It's an ordinance.
Oh, because it's an ordinance.
It's an ordinance change. Well, in approving for consent...
We're frustrating.
Yeah, yeah, you're correct, yeah.
Yeah, we can't.
So, we'll offer a first reading.
Okay. All right, so, no one from the audience, we'll move on. Item number 20, and we do have new data on this item, I think, I hope I remember to mention that, and the new data is a letter from the mayor and the city attorney with respect to how exactly this would, this would work. So, item number 20, and I should have read the item first, adoption of procedures for the city council members on military duty to participate remotely for council meetings. This comes to us from city council.
Madam Chair. Three things in order, isn't it?
I, excuse me, Mr. Burnier, did you have a comment you wanted?
No, I just wanted to point out that we, we received comments from members of the council on this, and we tried to put together a resolution that council might be happy with, as it pertains to the rules. I talked to Mike DeFazio and to Casey, and we actually came down and tried out some equipment down here, and there's two different ways, generally speaking, it'll work, and again, it depends upon what's allowed in the military, too, so we wanted to have that. We have no idea if the military is going to allow a video feed or not, depending upon the situation. So, we tried to have it a, kind of a generic feel. We had the one where we have the speaker system for the phone, if all you can do is do a call-in, and that works quite well with the, with the sound system, and the other one was to put a laptop and face it out at the crowd, and they can see Councilman's face while he's on the other end of it, on the communication. The resolution that we are proposing, if council wants, it's your rules, would be, of course, this is only for military leave, when you're on military duty, and it calls for a timeframe of notification to the council president, so these arrangements can be made in a period of time, so that the public knows, so that they can contact the person, either by email or whatever other situation, in case they have questions of that person.
Madam Chair. Vice President Burr.
Paul, overall, I think this is really well done. I think you addressed the different items that we had talked about, and I think this is really workable. I only have one question, and it's related to what you were just talking about, and I know Mr. Donavich just wanted to speak, and maybe he can speak to this, too, when he gets the floor, but the question that I'd like the council to think about, I'm not sure what the right answer is on this, is, are we comfortable with it being just a speaker? Or do we want to make sure that there is some kind of video feed, not just to see, you know, in this case, Mr. Donavich's face, but for information being fed back to him? Like, when, if we're looking at a site plan or whatever, that he can see what we're seeing on the screen? You know, I haven't gone through the technical trials you guys have gone through, but all of us have done WebEx meetings with work, I think we could very easily, it would seem that we could do something like that, where when Rob speaks, the people that are watching on TV, it would just go to him during that time, they wouldn't have to see him all the time, so that takes care of that, but that also allows him to see what's being fed to us, and I guess I would propose that that video feed be a requirement for this to work. But I'm open to comments on that.
The problem we had, we tried leaving it kind of an open-ended, because you never know what we're gonna get. And part of the problems, like with Mr. Termina, for instance, a lot of his meetings, he has things he's showing, that creates the logistical problems for us. As I understand, the tech, my limited knowledge of technology is that when we cut up to anything that Mr. Termina, or anybody is showing on the board, then we lose the ability to have that connection. So, it might be, at least that's how I understand it, I don't pretend to understand...
It seems odd to me, but I trust you, you've talked to them, but that seems odd to me.
But it seems to me that Mr. Donavich, all he could have to have, like, for instance, right now, I'm on, I don't use the paper files I use, as council members do, the background information online, and I have a split screen going on right now. So, with split screens, or two screens, he should be able to see the information that's in the council package, as well as having a feed coming to the council chambers. But, again, it's something, we want to work this out and get it as best, but we don't know at this time, we wanted to get the rule in place, so if this does pop up, we can at least deal with it in an emergency situation. I don't think we're limited to any, necessarily any technology, we're gonna want to get it the best we can, but this doesn't limit us.
Okay, I understand. I, Rob, when you get a chance to speak, I'd be curious, too, what you think the feasibility is of the video feed, so, I'm all set, then.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilmember Donavich.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Paul. Yeah, so, ultimately, it just depends on the military member's availability to, quite frankly, Wi-Fi. It is, when it comes to security protocols in the military, speaking of my leadership, they are very helpful and understanding, and they will make appropriate availability for members of the military to participate in a area, but quite frankly, I think, just off the top of my head, not being a technical genius, is Skype, those kind of platforms, where I'm looking at, or a member of the military is looking at a laptop with some sort of camera device on it, but again, the biggest issue is just being able to connect to the internet, depending on what theater you're in, whether that be overseas, or that be one of the different bases across our state or across the country. Typically speaking, you do have access to Wi-Fi. At this point, bases have been retrofitted infrastructurally with different technology capabilities, so, again, it's really hard to determine what you can or cannot do, because we're not there right now, and it's hard, from a technological standpoint, how you can connect or whatnot, but I think maybe, just thinking, a suggestion is pointing one of the cameras at a screen, so if you think that, if council's decision would be, we want the council member to do their best to have their image appear to the audience, or to the people watching, which I think is a great idea, maybe that's a question for our TV department to, maybe they can point a camera at a screen, maybe that might be the best way, because again, it is so hard to really guess where that member of the military will be, and what their availability to Wi-Fi connected devices can be at that time, so.
Vice President Burr.
Having discussed all that, I do think this is a really good proposal, and I think it's workable, and recognizing that if we want to make changes, this council has the power to do that at any time, I'll offer an approving for this, for consent, if there's no objection.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilmember...
Sorry, we'd just like to add also, and to touch base on what Paul said about proper notification, there is 99% of the time, ample time, to let council president know, I'm gonna be, a member of the military will be gone for X amount of days, there are, with OPSEC and security protocols, it is difficult sometimes to give time, date, and whatnot, but generally speaking, you can give proper notification, so that Open Meetings Act and proper notification to the community can also be given, so, thank you.
Thank you.
And Madam Chair, one, we don't have to go on the regular, that's just my call. It's an ordinance.
Yes, I've forgotten that twice tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember White. Councilmember Jolly.
So, I was just gonna say, this is written so that it's open-ended enough that we don't, I would not think that we would have to adjust it as technology changes, and we can kind of play around with what works and what does not work, Scott. I mean, to your point, I understand your point, and I think that would be the most appropriate route, but I think it's written in an appropriate manner to be flexible for whatever the best technology at the time, and whatever we find work, working, to continue doing it or adjusting it.
Mr. Burnier.
If I could just address what Councilmember White said, putting it on the regular, since it's an ordinance, the ordinance was passed previously by council authorizing the resolution for the rules. These are simply council rules, so it is, it is not an ordinance. The ordinance has already been passed.
That said, I would still like it to go on the regular agenda.
That's fine.
Yeah, okay. All right, it'll go on, the approving resolution will go on the regular agenda. Is there anything else? Anyone from the audience? Good evening, Mr. Crandall.
Good evening, Madam President, members of council. My name is Patrick Crandall. I wanted to follow up with you, you approved me to the Livonia Board of Review a couple of weeks ago. My apologies for not being physically present, I was on a pre-planned vacation, so I wanted to just to take the opportunity to appear before council, thank you for the opportunity, and offer a chance to ask any questions.
Yes, Mr. Jolly, Councilman Jolly.
Mr. Crandall, it's my understanding that you were performing the duties of the review board this evening.
That's correct.
Do you still want the job?
It's been an interesting day.
Do you intend to your resignation?
Not yet, sir.
Yet?
All right. Mr. Crandall, thank you very much for taking the time to come here. We understood and appreciated the fact that it was, it was really something that could not be rescheduled, we're glad you got it in before all this COVID-19, you got your trip in, and again, thank you very much for the courtesy and the respect of coming this evening, it's appreciated, and especially hanging in for a long meeting, so thank you, and we're happy you're on the review board, and despite what Jim Jolly says, we really want to encourage you to stay on it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else? One once, gone twice. Adjourned. Good night, Livonia, thank you, Livonia TV.